Mike, watch out.
It looks like he is, right?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. If we can call this meeting to order, first, as usual, if you'd stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. My name's Anthony Doyle. I'm the town moderator. Today is Wednesday, October 9th, 7:00 PM. I am going to call to order a special town meeting that is being called by a warrant signed by your select board. I will note for the record it was duly published and posted in at least six locations, as evidenced by the return of our constable. With me on the stage today from my right, John Boyle, member of the select board, Mark Strout, Daniel Esco, Robert Bishop, all members of the select board. Robert Bishop being chair. To my left, Tom Hutchison, town manager, Heather Hunt, our town clerk, and members of the finance committee, William Droshin III, Thomas Irwin, and Sue Vijan. This meeting is being recorded. Please raise your hand to be recognized if you intend to address the assembly tonight. Please identify yourself by name and residential address when you do speak, and please only one at a time. We have a relatively brief meeting tonight. There are four articles on the warrant, and we will get started immediately. Article one, to see if the town will amend the appropriation for Article 710, debt excluded, of the fiscal year 2025 budget as approved under the motion to Article four of the warrant for the May 6, 2024 annual town meeting, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town decrease the appropriation for account number 710, debt excluded, of the fiscal year 2025 budget as approved under the motion for Article four of the warrant for the May 6, 2024 annual town meeting by subtracting $48,668.
I'll second that.
Article one has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Tom Hutchison.
Thank you. One clarification. I did leave out, unfortunately, the engineers referred to were engineers for the Dalton Division Road project. So it is that project which we require borrowing less money for this fiscal year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of Article one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Passes unanimously Article two, to see if the town will raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of final engineering and construction of town hall plumbing, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements, including all incidental and related costs, or to take any other action in relation thereto.
I move that the town transfer from capital stabilization account the sum of $350,000 for the purpose of final engineering and construction of the basement and main floor of town hall heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements, including all incidental and related costs, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Sorry.
The select board recommends to take no action on this article.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion to take no action under Article two. This is not a debatable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no.
No.
Okay, it passes. Article three, to see if the town will raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of increasing the appropriation for account 171 Conservation Commission as approved under the motion for Article four of the warrant for the May 6, 2024 annual town meeting, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town raise and appropriate $15,000 for the purpose of increasing the appropriation for account 171 Conservation Commission as approved under the motion for Article four of the warrant for the May 6, 2024 annual town meeting.
I'll second that.
Article three has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Jimbo Dusset, 10 Renee Drive. Before I came here, I looked up on the town website the warrant for the annual town meeting, and the motions and explanations, and the articles at the town meeting, and I couldn't find any reference to the Conservation Commission anywhere. And it looked like Article four was about sewer user fees. So I noticed several things here referring to Article four. Could you clarify that, please?
Mr. Hutchison.
Article four is the article for the operating budget for the town. It includes the entire operating budget of the town. It necessarily has to include reference to the sewer user fees, which are not, they're a different source of revenue. So I can only say, it, the article, it's conceivable the article could be phrased more clearly. That's the way it has traditionally been phrased for years here in town, and it is for the entire operating budget, which I believe would be made clear in the discussion. And that, of course, refers to the finance committee report, and that's included with the warrant as well. So it's, I agree that it's not entirely straightforward, but that's how this town has done that.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My question then is this, does anyone at the platform know how much money was afforded to the Conservation Commission for this year? That's what I'd like to know, how much of an increase this is going to be? That's the question.
The Conservation Commission currently receives very, very little in funding. There's a small amount for expenses and no money for staff. This would be a substantial change to that budget. And if I may take the opportunity to say why we're asking for this at this point, the Conservation Commission for many years has relied on volunteers to do a lot of hard work when it comes to the business of the Conservation Commission, which is enforcing the state's Wetlands Protection Act and Rivers Protection Act. It is an increasingly technical job. It is a job which is, in fact, an enforcement job, as well as an administrative job. And it requires being a technical job, some specialized expertise. I pulled up, the city of Greenfield in Franklin County is currently advertising for a conservation agent. And I'll just note that a couple of things that they say in their job description, responsible for and performs routine and complex professional administrative and technical duties, including site inspection work in coordination with and under the authority of the Conservation Commission, must possess a bachelor's degree in environmental science, conservation biology, or related field, and two years' experience in wetland management, land conservation or related field, or an equivalent combination of education and experience, and other things. That's being advertised for about $26 to $30 an hour. This amount is calculated at $30 an hour. My intent would be to hire someone eight to 10 hours a week who's already working with another community. For the first year, that amount would not be necessary, but that is about what I would like, I would anticipate being budgeted for the next fiscal year. So I thought that bringing that number to the town now would be better than providing a $5,000 increase for next year, which would then be questioned, why is it going up so much? So that would be the total amount.
Go ahead, Bob. Go ahead, Bob. Okay, Bob, go ahead. Mr. Bishop.
I recommend passing this as a former 35-year-plus member of the commission, 25 of them as chair. This job is nothing but paperwork. I mean, there's some times when I was up at midnight trying to get the forms filled out during work. I had engineers calling me, trying to chase down site inspections and stuff. It would be a tremendous relief for the chair to be able to be a member and not have to do all this. Right now, we're enforcing the scenic mountain act in town, the state wetland protection act, and our town bylaw wetland. And it's a lot of work. You've got to know your soils. We've been trained in that. I mean, this town paid for educating us in soils, hydrology, plan ID, and stuff like that. And you really got to know your stuff today. And the law's ever-changing, you've got to keep up on this. And a conservation agent can do a lot of legwork for the chair or the whole commission, and they're kind of like a recommendation. They'll come in and recommend to the commission what to do. And that'd be such a big relief. Right now, the commission has no chair, so legally, they can't meet. So this would be a big step in hopefully asking somebody to be chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Henry Rose, North Mountain Road. I'm a member of the commission. It's not exactly accurate to say that the commission cannot function at this time. My wife, Cheryl, who was the chair, is stepping down. Will open the meeting, the next meeting. It's the third Tuesday each month. But we need to have a person who's hired to actually serve as the leader of the commission in Dalton. It's inaccurate to say, just as a consultant, because this person is responsible for doing the paperwork, for getting people to go to site visits. It's not like they'll just give advice, and then it's not their problem. So I hope there's nothing legal that says, as a consultant, I would recommend crossing out those words, "as a consultant," because the buck would stop with that conservation agent. They would be the person to receive the phone calls from people wanting to do projects from engineers or whatever, and then arranging for members of the commission to go for a site visit and getting the necessary paperwork done. We need volunteers. We need people on this. So if any of you here are interested, it's not just an annoying paperwork job. It's very interesting. We go for little courses where we learn about it and what we need to know, and it's something where we need people. Right now, one is on maternity. Bob just stepped down, but we still have a commission. We just need more people, and yes, it's time to have a conservation agent. My wife did this for several years after Bob, and the burden of doing the necessary organization and paperwork just got to be enough that she's wanting to just rid herself of that, but will still be on the commission. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to try to entertain them. She couldn't come to the meeting tonight because she's at another meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
For six months of the year, winter, there's not that much going on, but for the six months during the summer, there could easily be more than 10 hours a week. So on average, I think your estimate is about that.
Thank you.
Alnado, Elaine Avenue. I'm sorry to say this, but this is a kind of a sneaky way of increasing the size of government in the town of Dalton. I remember when this sewer user fee was first enacted. The question was asked a half a dozen different times, how, what's going to happen to the excess amount of money that we pay in? Because these sewer user fees are based on the estimated cost to Pittsfield for operating the sewer treatment plant. And there were a number of years when none of the money was going into any other fund. It was put into the general fund. And finally, it was when Mary Cherry was on the board that she got the town to now start putting up to $50,000 of the excess into a sewer account. And now you want to take some of that money and hire somebody who doesn't have anything really to do with the sewers. So I think the best way to handle this is either at an annual town meeting or on the ballot. But doing it when you have such a small crowd is not fair to the rest of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one question. Is this a salary line item or an expenditure line item? Because it doesn't say.
Mr. Hutchison.
Yes, and that's, I think I can speak to some points of all of the three last speakers by saying, the reason it says consultant is to distinguish that position from being an employee of the town. This should be a contracted position. They would be paid only for the hours they worked. They worked.
So that's an expenditure?
That is an expense. That is not a salary, because it is not meant for an employee of the town.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That Davis Cursor wrote, Sue was saying this about, Greenfield's about $28 to $35 an hour?
Can we have the conversation include everyone with the microphone?
You were saying the pay is about $28 to $35 an hour for Greenfield?
About $26 to $30. The, we surveyed a number of towns, a number of local towns. Some pay more, some pay less. Thirty seem to be about in the middle, but sufficiently competitive that we might be able to get somebody who's already working for another town.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of Article three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Passes. Article four, to see if the town will amend its bylaws by adding the following after chapter 150, a new chapter 151. I'm not going to bore you, Mr. Droshin. You're doing it?
Yeah.
Select board. Mr. Bishop.
I move the town amend its bylaws by adding a section in language as printed in the warrant for this meeting.
Second.
Article four has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you. Henry Rose, still at North Mountain Road. Is it possible to do more than change the bylaws, but actually to try to incentivize a business to open in one of our abandoned buildings? Is it possible to give something in the way of tax relief to a new business owner?
Mr. Hutchison.
Yes, I'll answer that, and I hope give a little bit more context to this. It would not be possible through this motion. That would be a different action by the town. The state has given towns, just this past May, they gave towns a new mandate, a new requirement, and that is to very explicitly favor what they're terming social equity applicants for anybody who wanted to start a marijuana establishment, as they call them. That's any kind of a, any kind of a business regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission. One of those options is a very onerous bylaw that the Massachusetts Municipal Association strongly opposed. And another is setting up internal policy guidelines that would do pretty much the same thing as the very onerous bylaw. This is the third option, which is the least onerous of all of the options for the town to take in order to be compliant with these new regulations. This says that only social equity applicants can apply for three years, and after that three years, the bylaw goes away. We all can not mess ourselves up with really cumbersome bureaucratic requirements, setting up committees to review applications that have to score them in various ways. It's really complicated. In the three years that I've been here, a little over three years, I've received two phone calls asking about setting up a retail, marijuana retail shop in town. Neither one of them followed up. So I don't see this as a particularly big deal. I don't think it's going to change things one way or the other, but it will make us compliant with state law, and it will, and I believe it's the easiest way to do this. I did bring this before the select board and had a discussion with them, and they are also on board that this is the best way forward under the circumstances.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Doucette.
Jimbo Dusset, Renee Drive. So I found all this legalese in here kind of hard to understand. I'm assuming this is some kind of boilerplate recommendation that you got from somebody else?
This was provided by town council for Dalton.
Okay. And the social equity, they call it, the definition, a social equity program participant. What exactly is that?
You may not be surprised to hear that the Cannabis Control Commission has extensive guidelines on who qualifies for the three different classifications that they have. They could be a social equity business, a social equity program participant, or an economic empowerment priority applicant.
Is this for somebody who's traditionally underprivileged? When you say social equity, is that what that is?
If I can just quote from this, it says more or less what it says in the explanation here, but if we were going to go the other bylaw route, we would follow this. A host community shall develop a municipal equity plan to encourage full participation in the regulated marijuana industry by individuals from communities disproportionately harmed by cannabis prohibition.
Okay.
And again, the definitions are spelled out in detail in the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Lee Gill, 298 East Hudson Sonic Street. Curious, does this fourth article include a CBD-type store? I have real bad arthritis in my hands, and I use CBD, but I don't want THC included in my CBD oil. And I went to one of the marijuana stores in Pittsfield, and they can't sell me plain CBD oil. It has to have THC in it. And you can only get that at a CBD store. Will there be a CBD store dispenser as well as a marijuana store dispenser?
This would not cover CBD stores. They are not regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Moderator. Mr. Boyle. Yes. Does this vote require a two-thirds majority? It's amendment to the bylaw? I would say that it does, yes.
I apologize for not including that in the motions and explanations.
It does, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Joe Albano, 609 South Street in Dalton. This proposal, or this change of bylaw, will greatly reduce the amount of work that the townspeople have to do as required by the state of Massachusetts in order to allow a cannabis business to operate in Dalton. Relieves us of a lot of work if we pass this. That's the way I see it here. Alleviate the need to create an extensive bureaucratic program, and this will only last three years.
Yes. We would, we would have to put together a list of everyone who was involved in the approval process and publish that, that basically all of the town, a lot of the town staff. We would have to include in that all of the documents involved in the local approval process. We would have to identify the application criteria for local approval and scoring methodologies that we relied on as a host community. Those would have to be developed, reviewed by town council, and promulgated. We would have to publish the scoring of each application for each individual applicant. We would have to provide an explanation in narrative form of the reasoning for approving or denying an application, and any other information required by the commission.
And this bylaw relieves us of all of that footwork, paperwork, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. While this will expire in three years, it does limit who can open a cannabis business or treatment center, correct?
It does.
Beyond that, three years, then it's open to anyone and everyone?
It is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Davis. It's coming.
Tom, just to help clarify this, it doesn't change our current bylaws now. This is just adding to it to save us the trouble of all the committees and a possibility of a lawsuit because we didn't determine the right person was the right thing. Anybody can still apply today, but our zoning bylaws still are enforced. It's just this one sentence putting into it. Am I correct?
Well, not the one sentence, but the things in the warrant. Yeah, this is actually not going to be added to the zoning bylaws at all. It goes under licensing. So that was another way of relieving the planning board of the burden of having to go through this in a public hearing process there as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, this guy handed to the planning board, and we shot it up to legal counsel just to stay out of it because of the jeopardy of where it was going. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of Article four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no.
No.
That does pass by at least two-thirds. Before we adjourn, the Green Committee had an announcement they wanted to make.
Yes. Hi, my name is Lori Martine.
Hi, my name is Lori Martinelli, I'm on the Dalton Green Committee, oh, thanks, and I want to invite all of you to a climate fair that we're having this Sunday at the Stationery Factory, I have flyers here, we have a lot of good speakers, and particularly, I want to draw your attention to, three, at 3:00, the town has hired a consultant to put together a climate action plan, and the consultant will be here to give a presentation, particularly want to invite our elected officials, it's important that we show support from our elected officials in this important exercise, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Mr. Droshene.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Thank you, that's unanimous, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening, thank you for your attention.